Calls me to order, stand for pledge.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Did everyone get a chance to read previous month's minutes?
Yes.
Yes.
I'll make a motion to win the second, the last month.
Second.
Second, Paul Faber.
Aye.
Aye. Going to close the regular monthly meeting and open the public hearing for the 2024 budget.
I'll go get that too. I apologize if you want to go to the next thing. Oh, you can't.
I can't go out.
Excuse me. I know.
Couple of extra chairs over that side, Randy.
Thank you.
No, you didn't want me to say? How long? She about got that here?
Okay, sorry about that. This is the notice that is to the taxpayers for the 2024 budget. The general fund budget estimate is $196,635. Maximum estimated funds to be raised is $169,699. Excessive tax appeals, zero. Current tax levy, $162,684. Tax levy percent is 4%. Local broken streets budget estimate is $9,450. Motor vehicle highway budget estimate is $29,895. The cigarette tax budget estimate is $3,475. Special fire territory general budget estimate is $96,930. Maximum estimated funds to be raised is $108,665. Current tax levy is $104,469. Levy percent difference is 4.02%. Special fire territory protection equipment replacement fund budget estimate is $26,500. Maximum estimated funds to be raised is $22,440. Current tax levy is $22,440, 0%. Totals are budget estimate for everything in 2024, $362,885. Maximum estimated funds to be raised, $300,304. Current tax levy, $289,593. Okay, any questions? Comments?
Is the police funding underneath the fire fund or something?
It's in the general.
It's in the general.
In the general.
Anything else?
It'll be at the post office, right? Is that where you post it at?
Trainee.
Don't you post it publicly?
It is, the gateway is the one that takes care of making that public. So I don't, I have, I can make a copy of this for you if you want.
Sure.
But there's a website that it's available at. And it's www.budgetnotices.in.gov.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Do we need to vote on that?
No, that's just, it's just a public hearing, so you just gotta take a motion to adjourn.
Do we have any other questions, comments on that?
No need.
Can I get a motion to adjourn the public hearing?
I'll make a motion to adjourn the public hearing.
Second.
Second.
Paul Faber.
Aye.
Going to reopen the regular business meeting. We have a representative from Censor Security.
What would you like from me, do you? I just really wanted to introduce ourselves. I was in a few weeks ago and left some information. It's an alternative to what you have now. We're over in Cambridge City and we do all the same things that your current provider does. We do the security, cameras, fire extinguishers, all the, all the things that the city does. And probably going to be at better pricing. I didn't get into pricing. If you want to go to that step, we can gather everything that you have. And in fact, I was probably instrumental in putting most of that in several years ago. So I know what you have and, and the things that would need to be done, that type of thing. So really just wanted to introduce who we are. My name's Rick Blunk, by the way, and I was with Corson for about 34 years. So, and that is your current provider. I retired early and didn't work for about three years and then decided to go back with Censor. A lot of things changed to the local Corson and that's one of the reasons I retired. So little history there that you probably couldn't care less about. But I'll just leave this honestly. And then as you guys talk about it, again, fire extinguishers, security, all of that, I'm sure you can save some money.
Question, do you do like phone lines and stuff like that as far as like the city building? So in other words, if the city building is closed and if someone doesn't have the emergency contact as far as the water and sewer, that it could redirect?
No.
You don't do that?
Okay. I think that's going to be maybe more of an IT thing, all of them. And we do advertise some IT services, but that, that would not be.
Yeah, relax.
I would guess somebody like that. And again, you guys do have fire alarm system that's hooked in with the fire department. You have security, extinguishers, about everything that I mentioned. So we can break that down individually and give you pricing on all that.
Yeah, that's what, to do a comparison. We do, I get a quarterly bill for the monitoring. And then the yearly inspection for the system and the yearly inspection for the fire extinguishers is what they, so if you want to, when you have a chance, work up some prices and email them to me. That way we can do some comparisons and then they can make a decision on if they want to change.
If they do, the, as far as the monitoring and that type of thing seamless, more than likely you have a 5G radio on it right now. That's the communicating part of it. If not, we would do that at no charge and everything would be the same and again, would be real seamless for you guys. I'll just leave this and it's got all of our information and introduces us a little bit. And if you decide you want to do something, then I will work some prices out for you.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you very much.
The take home policy.
I emailed that to y'all.
I wrote it.
I bet you I didn't print a copy of it.
I don't either.
I don't print that stuff off.
It was like two weeks ago.
I didn't print it off, but I emailed it to everybody. I'll go print one real quick, but you guys can discuss it. It's just the state board requires.
That we have one?
Yes. For the police truck, that's the only take home vehicle.
I got it. Just the town marshal one? Did you not get to read it? And I think it's more geared because you have the K-9 correct. And that way if, if he, if he gets told up, you don't have to come here and get a truck.
The auditors brought it up in my audit two years ago. And I brought it up and like kind of never got anything done about it. So this audit that I just had, it was mentioned again. So I called Aubrey and got her on it to prepare one and then emailed it to you guys when she sent it to me.
I found it.
But it's, they don't have a problem with.
Yeah, I wrote it.
It being a take home, take home truck, we just have to have a policy in place for it.
So we need a motion to accept the take home policy?
Yes.
Carrie, are you good with it?
Yeah, because it's, I contacted the sheriff's department and other agencies that have take home policies and it's the same as theirs. I mean, it's.
Yeah, she just found a general one and used it.
It's pretty standard and then, you know, it's pretty standard policy.
I'll make a motion to accept the take home policy.
Second, Paul Faber.
Aye.
The amended salary ordinance.
I emailed that to y'all too. You probably didn't get it either.
I did.
It just has the two employees added to it and the raise for Kyle. The email had the changes highlighted, so.
Do we need to discuss it?
I don't know, do we?
That's on y'all. If you agree with what, what it says, then just make a motion to pass it.
And that was with. The one for Kyle was with the, because what's he at now?
Eighteen, it will be at nineteen.
Okay.
And then if you look down here, it's got when everything went into place, when it, and is enforced, effective dates. Because that's their hire dates and then that's the beginning of the pay period that we're in right now.
He, he's a what? Is it this?
Yes.
That's what it, that's what he's going up to.
Oh, that's what he's going up to?
Yeah. It was eighteen. Until he gets his, when he gets his certification, then he'll, then he can get another one, but that's.
Any word on his test yet?
He, I talked to him today. He's calling tomorrow to schedule the date. So can I get a motion to accept the salary ordinance?
A motion we sent to the salary ordinance.
Can I get a second?
I'll second it.
Paul Faber.
Aye.
Centos contract.
Did you guys get that? Lori's got it.
I did print this one.
I did.
Because I figured we'd get the other stuff here, but I did print this one.
Yep. Go ahead. Read it.
All right, the current monthly invoice for Centos has a reduced pricing of 92.18. And that's rugs, cracker mat, and the urinal screens. Monthly items and uniforms, which is a once a month thing, which is 92.18. Jeans for three men, that 462 a piece, that's 13.86. The high visible t-shirts for three men, that's 7.92 a piece, comes up to 23.74. With a subtotal 108.77 plus tax and the service charge, which makes that 132.43. The weekly uniforms jeans are 13.86, shirts 23.76. Subtotal 37.62 plus tax and service charge comes up to 56.30.
So we gotta add all that together?
I'm a little confused how we go from 37 to 56. Thirty-seven plus tax and service charge, that's like 19 dollars.
That's the, if she, if you read down below, it's the.
The rugs and all that broke up the weekly.
That's insurance, eight cents would be the service.
Yeah, but see, this is 108, if you add tax to this, so I mean, that's, that's 19 bucks in tax and the service charges.
Both places.
But if you, does that have the rugs and all that?
Thirty, twenty seven dollars. Yeah.
So the rugs are this and then.
Yeah, that's what I'm paying now. Well, we actually, this is an invoice. It was that, then with the reductions, it'll be that. That's just the rugs and then you'd add the uniforms to that.
Which one is the?
Fifty-six thirty.
Right, that would be everything together.
Well, we have to add the 132.43 and the 56.30.
Yeah.
So add that one, that one.
Plus this one.
Right?
Right, you have to add all three?
I think she did it separately. These are just the rugs, these are just uniforms and this is everything. Monthly items plus uniforms.
Okay.
Ninety-two eighteen jeans.
So 132.43 a month.
Plus this.
So this is the, this is the.
Oh, okay, okay.
That's everything.
Okay.
And the reason, our contract's up for one. So we gotta decide if we want to keep any of it, just part of it. If we want to add the uniforms back in. And the thing with uniforms that, of course, we usually don't have an issue with, but we have losing an employee is you guys made it to where they didn't get uniforms through Centos and they went out and bought their jeans and their shirts at Apex or Big Blue, is what it used to be called. I don't want to call them now. But then when they leave, they don't have to give those clothes back. So the ones, the new clothes that were bought right before the employee left, being an employee, he got new jeans and new shirts and got to keep them. So that's the only thing, the town's out that money. You don't get that back.
Okay, so if we just keep it the way we are with the rugs and the mats, it's 92.18?
Yeah.
If we add the uniforms for the guys, it's going to be 132.43?
Yeah.
Okay.
So is that guy fired that was like last couple of meetings?
No, he was on.
Threw his keys at somebody?
He quit.
What did you guys, what did you guys want to fire him?
That's.
For that?
Pat, no, he was, he was disciplined for it.
For extra days?
That's not, if you want to talk about that when we talk, ask visitors to talk, then you can.
So the 132.43 for uniforms for the three guys and the mats.
Yeah, so that's on you guys.
If anything happens to like their jeans, if they get ripped out.
They replace them.
That would be the eight cents.
The insurance.
Right, the insurance side of it, so they'll replace them and they don't have to.
Plus we would have to add six dollars, right? That's the one time fee for departments. So that's going to be 134.43 plus 24 cents each week for this.
And then they get their hoodies and their bomber jackets through Corin Maine, so that's completely separate. That don't go through the, the uniform line item. It just gets split out of whatever department it is. And then they've been buying their boots, which that's, we never bought the employees' boots before, so. I mean, if you guys want to think about it, you can.
We're buying them jackets and insulated like coveralls and stuff?
Yeah, yes.
Really?
Yeah. And when's our contract done?
The Centos contract, she didn't tell me when it was up. She just said it was back for renewal.
That we should go ahead and do that. I've talked to the guys a little bit about it and they all seem to be okay with it.
I mean, I know the jeans they go buy are nicer, but they're like twice as much. And they have the, the designs on them and the fancy pockets and why do you need that to crawl in a sewer pit?
It would be nice if they had Centos uniforms. I will say that it would look much more professional and it would.
Well, they'll all be the reflective shirts like they have now, but they will be jeans on that side of it. They're not going back to the blue uniforms like they used to have 20 years ago.
But then that way they should be required to wear those reflective shirts every day and not t-shirts.
Correct, yes. Yes, if we're going to this, that's what they will be required to wear every day.
I would even vote for details on the water truck.
It's being done tomorrow.
Okay. I mean, just so, because when you pull up in somebody's driveway, it's nice to know how you use it in the city.
So what do y'all think?
You talked to them, did you think?
Briefly, yeah.
How many, how many pairs of pants do they get?
Think it's six a week? They can bring them every week.
I think you get like, I think you get like seven. And then you can get like seven shirts and seven other shirts is how it always worked when we had them.
So really the jean, if we went with this, we have three men, if they get three pair, isn't this amount going to trouble?
No, it's a weekly that they get.
Yeah, that's how many it is for them to, for a week, for them to last a week. They put a laundry bag back there with a rack, they pick up the dirty ones, they bring clean ones every week.
I just wanted to make sure if we got, you know, we got three pairs of jeans and three shirts, they're not going to get charged for three pairs. I'm saying it's a triple.
Any other questions, concerns?
Is that a change for every day?
Yeah, they get like five, five or six pairs.
Yes. They'll be here every week to start with and, you know, okay.
So can I get a motion to adopt or accept the new contract with shirts, jeans added to the Centos plus the rugs and whatnot?
And if you want to add the.
And add the insurance, the eight cents current insurance?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve the Centos contract.
Second?
I'll second it.
Paul Faber?
Aye.
Aye. Unfinished business, the, we need to take another vote on the ADA compliance. Aubrey done a couple amended items on it. It wasn't nothing major, I don't think.
Just to appease everybody that has to look over it and approve it. Is all the changes that was made on it?
Yeah. So I mean, there really wasn't any, well, there was like one change, what was it? Uh, the threshold.
I think it was the door, the threshold or the front door.
Yeah.
And then the back, park bathrooms.
I mean, we went over, we already.
I already passed it once, but.
I don't remember what it was that we changed. I don't even think it's in there.
I don't think the resolution got changed. They just had to do a new resolution because of the amendment.
Okay. So we need to accept, we need a motion to accept the ADA resolution?
I'll make a motion to accept the ADA resolution.
Second?
Second.
Paul Faber?
Aye.
Department reports?
Hey, real quick, the unfinished business, have you heard back from?
It's not on the agenda, you can't talk about it. Sorry.
So when stuff goes to get completed, because it wasn't put on there, we talked about it.
That's why I, when I send it, if I missed anything, let me know.
Do you want to hear this department report, Jim, in front of you? That's why you got it.
No, it isn't. On the sewer department, it looks like they discharged 657,000 gallons in July. They also dissed some in August, but they'll have those totals at that point. They got their little lagoons mowed twice, set up temperature gauge and rain gauge at the lagoons. They smoothed out a pile of stones that was out there to work on getting around the ponds themselves on driving around it. They cleaned out a line to self-reed for the chlorine to enter the system correctly. They were having issues as far as the flow of it, so they got that all cleaned out. They had chemicals delivered and they did five 811 locate tickets. Things that they need out there for the sewer would be, they're looking to get a trailer loaded number twos to go around the bulk tanks, drains at the lagoons. And then as far as looking at going ahead and getting the second tablet that we discussed months ago on that side of it, so that was on the sewer. And the reason they're looking to get more stone is because they're looking to make it a little bit safer when they drive around the lagoons because it's just grass on that side of it, so they're looking at putting some rock around it, just to give them a little bit more stability.
We need a little added out front too.
Yeah. So.
Questions?
We want to approve them to get a load of number twos or do they need to get a quote?
Well, they don't they?
Yeah. I'll let them, let them know that they need to get a quote for that. I wonder, are they able to use any of that stuff back there?
Not really. I mean, they might be able to, but it's not.
Because it has this black top.
Yeah, it's got black top in it, it's got dirt, dirt, it's got matting of some kind, like a felt paper in it. It's got all kinds of garbage in it.
And then what about the tablet?
Do we need, we need to get prices again on that or since we already did? Do we need, we need to get prices again on that, or since we already did?
I'll do it again.
I, I'll call and check to make sure if the prices have changed, and then I can put it on the agenda for the next meeting.
I think he'll be here tomorrow.
He will be.
So he'll be here tomorrow.
Okay.
We just don't want the guy to send him up here when he gets, when they're done with him.
Okay, on the water department, um, looks like they got the plant mowed twice, uh, got hydrants located and started the GPS. Um, it looks like they were at thirty-seven of the forty-five completed on getting them on the flow test. Is that correct? So, um, annual testing and sent to the HML, started flushing hydrants. What was?
Point thirty?
Oh, so they're, so they're doing the GPS on the locate is what they're doing. They're making sure, because not all, not all the hydrants are located on the GPS. But they did, they started flushing the hydrants. They got twenty-two of them done, um, getting flow of the hydrants. Looks like they flushed twenty thousand gallons. Had living waters come out for their annual cleaning of the chlorine equipment. Water truck taking to the shop and fixed, which we approved. That was just regular, that they got taken care of. That front end did get corrected on it. The skater system, been down running, been down running by hand about one to five of the month.
One fifth of the month that went down and he was having to run it.
As of right now, it is down again.
The actual water system of the plant.
As far as the high-pressure pumps kicking on, they're having to go out there.
The pumps aren't kicking on like they're supposed to. Did you, do you have that quote?
No, they have not sent them yet because they're not a hundred percent on what exactly is gonna be needed because of the old system on that side of it. They have, they were out once and they were getting everything reset. And they were retightening all the cables, and before it had reset, it actually started working again. It worked for a couple days by itself. And then it is down again. They're scheduled to be back out this Thursday to take a look at it again and evaluate what is going to be needed on that side of it. Basically, it has to do with the low level of a water tank. A rough estimate on the new skater system is gonna be anywhere from fifteen to twenty-five thousand dollars. That's what they gave them because they need to look at how old the system is. They, there's two or three different things that they can do to it, but they don't want to just do a temporary fix.
Don't wanna put a Band-Aid on it.
They don't wanna put a Band-Aid on it, so any, what they're looking at, anything that they do will be compatible with if we decide to do a whole new water plant back there. Everything that we put into it now...
Will be compatible.
Will be compatible with it.
I have, I spoke to Lou today regarding the new water plant, and he was going to do some investigating and try and find us the best upgraded system, I guess you wanna call it, to go to that, that way that it'll all, once we get moving.
What, what would that come out of?
Water.
Water.
The water?
As of right now, the water guy, you know, I think the tank is sitting at like fifty-two, is that right, fifty-two thousand?
Fifty-two feet or something about on the...
I'm not exactly sure. Once it drops below fifty-two, the high-pressure pumps are supposed to kick on. They're not kicking on. So they're going back out there and they kick them back on, on that side, then they shut them back off. The, at the fifty-two, you could actually go all weekend on that side of it. So as far as the system itself, you guys getting water, there is no concern whatsoever on that.
Is that where it causes our prices to go up?
Nope.
Okay.
Nope.
So they gotta go out there, kick this thing on, and then what, come back, how about late, how long does it?
I think usually about an hour. It just depends on exactly what it's at.
They're just asking for somebody to forget to go kick it back on the valve pump, I don't know.
That's not gonna happen.
Okay. I was just wondering like what...
They're not going home and going to sleep or anything like that, so.
Hour's not bad.
Yeah, um, the only thing is, is, which Shane's aware of it, and so is the fire department, that if they do get toned out and that they, if they need water, they're going to, which the two guys live here in town, so they're gonna hear them going out, so they know that they're gonna have to get up, they're gonna have to go out there and...
Do you know how to kick it on the channel?
I don't have keys to that water plant?
No, they're the only ones that have keys to it on that side of it, so it will be them that will be going out there.
And the only time we'd have to kick it on is if we're gonna hook to a hydrant.
Yeah, well, man, that's, okay, that's, I would think somehow the fire department should have it, since, you know what I mean?
They're not certified or trained to be back in that area, so.
We've done it this way for as long as I can remember. If we go out, we're gonna hook to a hydrant. We can run off a hydrant for ten to fifteen minutes before it really starts sucking on it hard. And then by that time, somebody can make the phone call. We've called Ron over the years numerous times to do it, so it's nothing new there.
But as of right now, as far as the water plant, you know, once the levels do drop down below that fifty-two, there is no notification, no alarm that does go off. The new system will have that, where our operators will be notified if it drops down below a certain level with the new system, once they figure out exactly what it is. They're gonna finish locating the hydrants. And they got Silversmith coming, um, they're gonna start and finish locating all the meter pits on GPS, 'cause they're not all in the system. Finish up all curb stops and note ones that have them painted. They're gonna make sure that all the curb stops that are in front of the meter pits that are there, they get painted correctly as far as that little blue paint that they put on them. And then, then they're gonna finish up the last twenty-three hydrants on flushing and get the flow test done on that.
So back to this new system, that comes out of the water utility operating, is that where that would come out of?
Probably, yes, I would say so.
Water utility operating is where that would come out of?
I don't know if I could, if it would all come out of water, if I'd be able to split it up. I'd have to ask ones that know more about the system.
I am working with Lou on...
If it has anything to do with the sewer part of it, too, then I can split it.
But I am working with Lou to work on grants. That has been in discussion for several months, actually. But that's my expedite. What we do now.
And don't have anything on the street.
I know he's been sweeping the streets, but I, I don't know. Carrie, do you wanna read yours, sir? Absolutely.
Um, we got that monthly reports. I did wanna make note, last month, we had seven, we drew seven cases, um, which I currently have seven cases working, not including the two case numbers that's drawn under the county that I've, I've worked, um, working under their case number. Um, completed two hours of firearms training last month, and then, uh, Trail's gonna be transitioning to being canine. Rebel and him are going through the bonding process. We'll start handlers, handler training soon, waiting on some training aids. And Explorer is down with that alternator. We had a draw, we thought it was something in the system, but went and had the alternator tested, and it needs, uh, replaced. Contacted Wetzel, they want a thousand dollars to do the repair.
They were what, three weeks out?
Yeah, it's about like three weeks out. Van Notes in Winchester, um, I know him personally, and they work on all the police vehicles there in Randolph County, too. He gave me a rough estimate around five hundred, depending on the alternator that I have to get, so it could be less than five hundred. And that's all I've been able to talk to, so, um, but it's, uh, alternator, it was tested and it was, it showed bad, so it needs to be replaced. I have given, um, Mike and Shane, um, a brochure. It's called Reach, Reach Alert. I had a couple citizens reach out to me about some sort of alert system. This is, uh, this Reach Alert is what the town of Lynn's been using for the last three years. All the information's there. The representative sent a, a quote in there. Something for you guys, don't have to decide on it tonight, but read on it. Basically, what it is, is, um, citizens subscribe to the, the Reach Alert, and there's, so if there's a water boil, Trina could put out a water order, or if there's something going on in town where it's a police matter, where I can set out alert, hey, citizens, please stay in your house, there's police actions going on right now, or, or fire department, whoever, you can do something like that. So, um, I found this is what, like I said, Lynn has been using it for the last three years, and they said they like it. But I give you the brochures. You guys can look over it. Nothing to be decided now. But I had a request from a couple citizens about something, some sort of alert system or something like that. I will say this, too, the individual that I talked to from this company, he says it sends out five messages, emails, texts, cell phone, and if somebody doesn't have a computer, it even does, it'll send an alert through a landline. So, um, it's just as long as they're subscribed to the, um, system, and it's, it's free to the citizens, so. Just something I wanna throw out there so you guys can look at, and not necessarily vote on it tonight, but, or decide on something, or I can keep researching other methods or something like that, or if you don't wanna go with it, and then that's, that's fine, too. So, um, other than that, um, I asked Sheriff Redder to be here today to answer any questions, 'cause it was brought up about the sheriff's department and me working together and stuff like that, so he's here to answer any questions pertaining to the sheriff's department about anything with some of the most recent events and, and such like that, so, um, that's why I asked him to come today, so. That's why Sheriff Redder's here. So I do appreciate you coming, Randy.
Can I ask a question, or do I have to wait?
During the visitor's forum?
It's called the visitors' forum?
Uh, the only thing I have to report for the fire department is our airbags came in last week?
Think so.
Last week.
If I remember right.
Yeah. Um, they are in service. Hopefully, we never have to use them, so. And we're gonna have some homemade ice cream in a couple weeks. Strawberry, maybe? You never know. You never know. You never know what kind of things I might come up with.
We know you're not one of them.
But that's all I have for that. Um, visitors' forum, who would like to start?
So you go along. I'll start.
Go for it.
Okay. Stand up, so people can see me. Good evening. My name's Joanna Han. I'm manager of Levi and Catherine Coffin, St. Storick site, and I've come tonight to ask the town of Fountain City if they'd be interested in providing a letter of support for some federal funding that we like to receive for a project at the property next year. We're applying for it in October, and we'll know by February next year if we receive it. We are interested in doing what's called a cultural landscape report, which will allow us to do, um, sort of archaeological survey and work around the Coffin home at one thirteen, so the, the lawn around, to allow us to understand how that property has been used while it's been lived on, probably from around eighteen sixteen up until the site was purchased by the state in, or the house in eighteen sixty, in nineteen sixty-six. So, uh, the federal funding goes to properties that are national historic landmarks, which we made that requirement for. The funding, the federal funding comes through the Division for Historic Preservation Archaeology here in the state of Indiana, so that's who will receive the application, and we're budgeting for seventy thousand dollars for the project. So, um, the federal funding that comes through the state office will cover fifty percent of that, and then our institution will cover the other fifty percent. So, um, they like to see letters of support amongst our community to, um, uh, from the community to be able to speak to the importance of our sites to those communities, so, um, I know that the applications due October sixth. I know that we want to try to turn it in before then, 'cause we don't wanna wait till last minute. So, uh, there are other entities within the county that we're reaching out to, but I wanted to come to the board tonight and, and ask and find out what I can do to help make that happen.
You prepare a letter and email it to me, and I'll sign it.
I'm so glad it was that easy doing this. So I might have that ready for you tomorrow, with review. Okay, but did anybody have any questions about that?
Would you like to have, like, other members like us to be able to sign to give our support?
Um, I think citizen letters would be fine. I would just need them by probably no later than about Levi Coffin days period, so I've got enough time.
Individual letters or a list?
I'm sorry, I didn't understand.
Would it be individual letters, or can we sign a list of people here who?
Uh, that sort of thing, yeah. What about your group? If they did that and coordinated that and collected signatures?
Okay, I was like, we can talk about that at the meeting tomorrow, the committee meeting?
Okay, I'm thinking of how, probably it would be easy to do that, or... Okay, yeah, I'd be more than welcome to that, so, um, so I appreciate everybody's support with that. If you have any questions about, you know, what you put in a letter of support, basically in this case with the town, it's just, you know, you're, you're letting the state and the federal funders know how important the site is to this community and the impact that makes, so. And I'm pretty much the interpreter to center Monday through Friday, so you can always come and find me and ask me further questions you might have. But thank you. Well, let me know what is decided. Okay, and then we'll try to get the word out, if, if folks wanna sign that, so. Any other questions? All right, so I appreciate that.
Thank you.
I call historical stuff.
Who wants to be next?
I call, yeah. I call, I left a message about it, so.
I was here on the zoom and asking, I know this is closed business, and it seems petty for who all's here, I can see, but I want my yard fixed.
We've, I've reached out. Several different times.
Yeah, they need to come in with topsoil, they need to kill the crabgrass.
Yeah.
And fix it right. And I didn't ask for the fire hydrant in my yard. They need to fix all that around that, too.
A lot of us didn't.
Well, I know. Progress, I get that, and change, and it's great.
But I have...
But fix it.
I emailed them, and the engineer firm has emailed both companies also, so.
And they'll come in here in December and fix it either.
Yeah, I think they came in in November or December or something like that. It was still, it was still pulled outside, but they didn't mind, and it, it never did grow right.
No, and it's not going to if they don't do it properly.
Correct, 'cause you first reached out to them about seven months ago.
Wasn't that long ago?
They dug up my apple tree and killed it.
Yeah, they killed my brandels, too. I wasn't home.
I spent money on that.
Yeah, so I'm speaking for all of us then. I knew six oh four Dixie Drive as well needs theirs fixed. The curb is gone, so you all address that this evening, but, yeah, it's like, I know it's closed business, but they need to come back and do their job right.
They have an annual one-year inspection coming up.
Okay. I'm sorry. I apologize, but I'm just like, fix it.
I think it's October is their one-year inspection. The engineer will be here, one or more of us will be involved in that.
I'd like to know what day that is and when they're coming, and I will take a P D O day and stand out in my front yard and say, fix it.
Do you also get reimbursed for the things that they destroyed that we spent our own money on?
If it was in the street right away, then, um...
No, it's in the street, it's in our yard.
It's six feet off the street, it's in the right of way.
No, they came into my yard more than six feet and destroyed a tree that I owned.
Well, you know what my yard looks like. Destroy anything but my yard.
Right, yeah.
And I hate mowing my yard there, and it's right in front of my house, and I don't, uh...
I know Shane has a list on all of that stuff and everything else that they need to address, and I know the water, water people are...
And I'm hoping that I'm around that day.
As well.
Yes.
You gotta take a P D O day, too. I will.
I don't, I don't know how that works with them. We'll have to, I'll have to get with the engineer firm on that. So, I mean, I, I really don't know.
Shane, while I'm thinking about it, there on my curb. Anyhow, when, when they... Anyhow, when they start patching places, there's a big section north of the curb that they don't have any, they didn't put any blacktop in, so it's just nut pedal there. So, when they're patching, that's a good place to patch, okay?
We'll pass that to our guys.
You already know what my complaint is and nothing's happened, so I won't repeat it.
I have, their inspections in October, is there any way we could get one of their representatives here to answer some questions in like November, December?
I can ask, I can reach out.
I mean, I don't know, like one guy came, that whole meal, he was here, I don't know who he was with, but.
Well, we had two different contractors, so.
So, how do we find out?
Mine is just the water lines, not the sewer.
So, how do we find out, like, when we figure out all that stuff? Like, will I be at the next meeting?
I'm gonna reach out to the engineer firm and see what we can get figured out.
So, how do I find out? Do I get contact information or?
We can give, I mean, we can have the, have it on the agenda for the next month, I mean, that's the best we can do.
And then what happens if you don't save enough?
You're not keeping time, they keep the time.
Yeah, but, but we just, we, we've got to, I've got to get with the engineer firm and figure out what they've got because it was all grant money and X amount of dollars is all we have to spend for these projects. And once that's gone, that's gone.
Well, I understand, it's just that, you know, when you get told by the city that they're gonna do something and they just don't really care about the property and they just get it done.
This is the first that we've heard about yours and this has been going on for two years.
Well, last, I don't, I don't really care, honestly. I'm just trying to tell you what my issue is. Also, I've been talking to a lot of people, I'm sorry, is it okay if I go my turn?
I just want to say thank you for reaching out to the engineering company. Thank you, yeah, thank you.
I'm in contact with them.
Okay, I appreciate that, Shane.
Is it my turn?
Go ahead.
So, um, well, actually, I want to ask a question with you about that.
You are, what is, what is your name?
Dylan Brockman.
Your address?
205 South Lynn Street, Fountain City, Indiana, or 7341. So, um, with that thing for protecting the, you had said that, um, they would shut you down or whatever, or, or send you an email or text and tell you that you shouldn't go outside, or are you wanting to make that a thing where they send you an alert?
The alert system?
Yeah, are you trying to make it to where they send you an alert and then like, you guys are allowed to like tell us that we can't leave our house? Because when you said that like if there was a fire, that they would send you an alert, tell you.
It's just an, it's just an information thing. It's kind, Randy, can I use your app kind of like in an example?
Shouldn't that buy some?
It's like, like the sheriff's department has it.
I just, I just wanted to check.
It's like the sheriff's department, if they have any certain events going on, they have an app that they, that if people are subscribed to, um, any like investigations where the citizen's safety may be concerned or something like that. This is just like a phone version of that.
Okay, cool.
So.
So, as long as it's not like forcing people with.
No, no, it's just to shoot out information because I had some citizens ask if we had anything like that, so I did some research.
Well, I just, I can see a point when someone makes a policy, the board or anybody coming up with a policy to just force you to do these because of all these.
You can't do that.
Well, there are four things common about an emergency situation.
What I'm talking about are the ordinances right now. And there are things that come up and then we have ordinances on that are crazy. And a lot of people are, I've been around the town, talked to a lot of people and I've talked to a lot of business owners. So, I wrote this so that it'll be short and sweet and just not combative. So, my name is Dylan Brockman, I'm here because I want to recognize a divide that we are experiencing today. This seems to be causing conflict between each other. We are as a society getting caught up in our own lives and bleeds into other people's business. Instead of taking care of ourselves, we are starting to as a community hold other people to our own viewpoints, viewpoints that don't align with others. There is a divide that is happening within our community. We must seek to resolve our differences aligning the values once again. The goals that have been set in the past do not align with the community today. City ordinance is considered draconian by today's standards. We have city ordinances that people are taking advantage of, using valuable resources that should not be used for personal preferences or financial gain. I have spoken to active community members and local businesses that are frustrated. The people are fed up with how things are being run, we are not homeowners association. Several people have spoken to me about harassment. There are people steering the city ordinances to have the police enforce them. There are complaints about the cops not being active enough. The problem is that people in our community are making complaints on arbitrary ordinances, drawing attention from more pressing matters such as patrolling investigations on crimes. The lack of police funding at the very least is problematic. Our board members and the actions of their employees taking place in the last meetings given concerns within the community. Violent behavior and misconduct observed by the people of Fountain City. Calling into question the concern for our safety, the people are calling into question the three-day suspension for that employee that acted out. Now more than ever, we need to know, can we be safe? We need to start working together. What we need is to change the ordinances and the way they are enforced. We should look into what the people want and look into the policies to preserve what the people want. We need the policies to reflect what the people want, what they need and how it's enforced. I'm willing to help organize an effort to identify the needs and wants of the people if I would be allowed to. Also, if we could get something for that lady, I could help organize something to talk to the people, figuring out what they want and seeing if they wanted to sign that thing for them to help the community. So, not to care trying to badger you, I'm just, I'm, I'm offering a hand. What is kind of getting ridiculous is all the crazy crap that's going on.
We have started a town committee, it's called Fountain City Forward and our next meeting is tomorrow, but that's pretty much what we do, is try to, you know, support the community and different things. So, you're definitely welcome to come to those meetings to help a little bit.
Thank you.
Um, it will be at Pizza King tomorrow at 6:30, I believe is what time it is.
Also, I would like to say that there, there are a lot of concerns with how that one guy threw his keys and then there, there's been a lot of people talking about how it's crazy that he only got a three-day suspension. It's, it's ridiculous because when you go to a job and you, you get fired for fighting people, you get fired for having that type of.
That's in the past, we're done with that.
Well, I'm not and I'm talking during the.
No, we're done with it, it's over. And your time is, we have a time limit.
Okay, well, what I'm trying to say is, is that the people of Fountain City don't appreciate how you guys did that and handled that, you should have been fired. So, whether you're done with it or not, we're not.
Well, he's not, he is no longer with the company and there's nothing else we can do about it.
When you end this time, that happens.
We'll deal with it at that point.
That's why they got to call you.
Who's next?
I guess, go ahead, oh, sorry. Okay, so, yeah, my name is Beth Conway, tonight I'm here representing the Lions Club. Um, we just wanted to say thank you for the contribute to Levi Coffin Days. Um, and then also I am putting together the parade. So, I don't think I have talked to anyone from the fire department yet about being in the parade. Um, I need to get forms and everybody lined up as soon as possible to know who's gonna be in it. Um, as well as anyone from the town. I've had people from the school, um, different 4-H members in the community, anyone and everyone that wants to be in the parade, just please contact me so we can get that all together. The more we have, the better, so, it'd be great. Um, if you all have any questions or anything about Levi Coffin Days, I can try to assist with that. If not, I'm gonna go.
I've got a question for you, but I'll do it after.
Okay.
I've got one question, so do you have any visual calling around for donations? Because I had, I can't remember whose name was given to me that day, but there was saying somebody calling around for like donations for Levi Coffin.
Okay, um, I'm not sure, the only two people, so. Actually, I believe Stacy, um, that works at the mini mart. Um, she had somebody like on Facebook or something talking about asking, and I do not know who that person is. They're not a member of the Lions Club, so I would say that's, yeah, probably not. Okay, yeah, I forget what the person's name was, but I.
Who's the guy's name?
I think it was like Tony or something, yeah, I was like, yeah, we don't have anyone, there's like four of us. Yeah, all right, if there are no other questions, I'm actually late for the Lions Club meetings.
Next. Go ahead.
My name is Dylan Smith, 101 North Front Street. Uh, I'm curious about a sewer septic issue. Now, I know that the gentleman talked to two members on Tuesday about the situation. I don't know which members he, they spoke to.
I talked to him, I talked to him, yes.
Okay, well, here's the thing, this has been going on for quite a while. This is not something that's new. Um, they originally came out in January of '22 about this issue. Instead of everything going into the septic like it's supposed to, it's backing up into the back out, starting to clean out, okay? And when, and, and I, I understand he's no longer with you guys, but I have to reference him because he's the one that came out.
Right.
So, when Chase came out to check this out, because when, the first time it happened and I paid for somebody to come out and clean it out, he, that gentleman who cleaned it out, had called the town, but apparently there was a transition right there between the last guy and Chase and nobody got the message and nobody responded. They wanted somebody to come out and clean, you know, pump out the, the system and look at it and so forth. That never happened. So, I had to make the call and they did in fact get somebody out to, to pump it out. Nobody inspected or anything. And then it was about a month or so later and it backed up again. So, that was when Chase came out in January of '22. The other gentleman, um, who is here now, who's ready to be certified, he came with Chase that day. They had to end up cleaning that out so that I had a working bathroom. Chase that day said to me, and the other guy was witness to this, there is an issue with the septic. It is not allowing, you know, things to drain into it like it's supposed to. This problem has been going on since that time. Chase told me, he said, we're gonna get, we're gonna get you on the books, we're gonna get this taken care of, we're gonna figure out what we have to do and so you don't continue to have this problem. All right, only that didn't happen. All right, as a matter of fact, nothing happened. So, they would, they told me, you start having issues, you call. We'll come, we'll take care of it and get you on the books and get it taken care of. Every time I had a problem, I called, they came.
So, as far as what I know about it on that side of it, so they both are, like, both of them filed?
Look, the, no offense, and I don't want to interrupt and I don't, and I believe me when I say this, I'm not trying to insult anybody or anything else, but these guys don't know anything about sewer. They don't even know what they're looking at when they look in there. You know, as a matter of fact, they're trying to blame my, the plumbers who came out and redid my bathroom for this issue. They didn't touch the pipes going to the sewer system, all they did was redo my bathroom.
Right.
That was it, that had nothing to do with it.
Before then, my understanding that there was no problem.
No, no, that's not accurate. And, and just so you know, when they asked me that question originally, I had to do a little bit of thinking about what they considered a problem. Now, mind you, my toilet was changed when I redid my bathroom, so I went from a three to four down toilet to a one and a half down toilet.
Right.
All right, this kind of triggered the issue in that you don't have as much water going through, so it's not forcing it through like what you would expect it to do. However, with the old bathroom, before we had changed anything, we routinely had to use a plunger to get it to go down properly. Now, at the time, we were thinking, okay, we know these pipes are old, we know they haven't been changed, we know that it needs to be remodeled, and so we just kind of let it go. We didn't, we didn't call the town, have them come out and check it out because we really thought it was an internal issue with, with everything that needs to be redone. So, we really didn't make a big deal about it. But, if you look at that and you look at what we're dealing with now and then you look at what they found today, which I have that information and I'll give that to you, you know that there was an issue already existing. It just didn't present itself the same way it does now because again, the whole thing was remodeled, the toilet was changed to a smaller amount of water going through.
Right. Is it not going out of the septic to the actual sewer lines?
It's not, well, it's not going into the septic, it's backing up into the clean out. So, you know, if you, I don't know how yours is situated, but you have the white pipe that comes up, that's the clean out. And it's supposed to go, instead of going up into that, it's supposed to go into the, the septic thing. It's not doing that, okay? Now, Chase's, uh, evaluation of the situation was that the pipe was sitting too close to the wall of the septic and that was not allowing it to come out like it's supposed to. All right, now, he was close, but it wasn't necessarily correct. So, I didn't even know if I was gonna make it here today because I lost my bathroom today, okay? I managed to get through the weekend with the bathroom, but I'm, I'm gonna say something about you guys, all right? No offense, I don't know them that well, I know that they're, they're not originally from this kind of utility. However, they basically threw up their hands and said, this is your problem. They didn't care if I had a bathroom for, for the week between the, the time that they came out and, and I had to come in here and talk to you guys. They, they really did not care about that situation whatsoever. It didn't matter to them because it was explained to me like this. So, when they first get out to the house that day, we could go today, they tell me that there was no documentation about any of this going on, none. This is what they say to me, all right? I'm saying, well, that's not right, I said, he's been coming out here since January of '22. Why is there no documentation? Well, that's not my fault, that's not my problem. However, as soon as they found out that I had the remodel done, oh, they latched on to that right away. Well, you had the remodel done and the problem started, that means the, the plumbers, this, this is their issue. I did not have fly-by-night plumbers, number one. Reynolds came out and did the work on my house, that's number one. Number two, they had nothing whatsoever to do with the sewer system or the septic. All they did was work on the pipes inside the bathroom. So, they proceeded to tell me, well, we have to go meet this guy and we'll come back in a few hours. So, evidently, in the meantime, they talked to two of you is what I was told. But lo and behold, suddenly they find documentation, which they could not locate before. And of course, this documentation is in your favor, saying that it's not the city's problem, that it's my problem. However, I was able to get somebody out today and he found the problem within five minutes. Right, and the problem is when the sewer company, the, the people that put it in originally, put it in, they did not put the pipes in correctly. Meaning, instead of one pipe going into the septic, there are two. There's one that comes from the kitchen and the laundry room. And that one is placed correctly in the septic. And there's a separate one that comes from the bathroom. That one is not placed correctly.
So, anything from the tank to the house is not the town's responsibility?
Well, there is an issue with that because they're the ones that placed the pipes in that septic.
When they said the tank, they tied into the existing on that side of it, so.
Yes, but here's the thing, here's the thing. We had nothing to do with how they set that septic in there. And they, they are very much aware as a company who sets septic things that you cannot set it in that way. Because if you have a septic where the sewer is coming in on the sidewall and the water's coming in this way, there's a dis, there's, there's a disruption there. It keeps it from coming in like it's supposed to. So, it's not allowing it to come in like it should. And the pipe that they connected to or whatever, instead of doing it correctly and, and tying it into the water that's coming in from the rest of the house, they just ran it straight into the tank.
So, when was the septic put in, 30 years ago?
Twenty-five, thirty, something like that.
Yeah, yeah.
Nineteen eighty-eight.
Nineteen eighty-eight.
No, it wasn't eighty-eight, because my daughter was born in eighty-eight, and we weren't living in that house.
It was in the nineties, early nineties.
Yes, it was in the early nineties, because we were there for about a year or two years.
Yeah, because I put, I put my house in in eighty-eight, right where my son was born.
Well, my daughter was born in eighty-eight as well, we were not living in that house. We moved into the house in ninety-one. And we were there about a year, I believe, or right in that general vicinity, when we started being charged for the, for the septic. Now, the actual septic wasn't done at that point, but it was after.
I don't know my.
I guess it depends on which, which part of the, the town you live in, I don't know, but ours wasn't in that same.
Mine was, because it, that was part of the stipulation with the realtor, I had to have an inspection, I had to have all that done before they would give the grant of.
I understand. I've got documentation, and the gentleman that, that came out today said he's more than willing to talk to you and explain what he found and, and what's wrong. But the fact of the matter is, that septic was not put in correctly and tied into the pipes correctly. And the reason that it's, it didn't show before like it's showing now, is because I had to remodel my bathroom. Now, I shouldn't have to worry about if I have to change the size of my toilet.
I will see if, I think Triad done that also. I think. The engineering firm.
I don't remember who it was. I know, I know this one guy, this, he must have been six-four, six-five, he had to make it under my house, and how he did it, I don't know. Oh, crawl space, I mean tiny, tiny crawl, crawl space.
I'll touch base with him and see with Triad, see.
Uh, I have the gentleman's name and what I had to pay today, and what I had to pay previously, if you need to take that. Because he had no problem with talking to you guys and explaining what he found.
Let me talk to them first, and then.
That's fine. Do you want me to, I, these are copies, I have the originals.
It, it's up to you. If you want to leave them with me, that's fine, and I can get with him, and we'll go from there.
How often are the septic tanks empty?
As often as they.
I do believe every other year.
Yeah, they're supposed to be on, on, like, half the town done one year, half the town done another year.
It's been five years since one was pumped.
Yeah.
Five years.
The only reason mine, mine's been done is because that guy called, and said this needs to be done.
They, they go by the water usage.
I don't know how it goes.
I'm not sure that just what.
Right. Luke, I mean Luke, we've got a revolting contact.
I know you guys have a regular guy now, but when you guys first started, you didn't have a regular guy, there was that big truck that came around, or whatever it was, but.
You go by water, you said you should pump one about twelve times.
I don't use that much water.
Keith? You were walking that way, sir?
My name's Keith Webster. Live on the south side. I spoke today with Mrs. Geneva Price, she's a teacher at Northeastern, she teaches a class called Community Service. Didn't offer that when I was in school. But, um, there's twenty-eight students in that class, and they were looking for some kind of community service project. And trying to think outside the box, um, I pitched the idea, and I'd like your approval, because they were receptive to, doing a little restoration and beautification of the memorial to Marshall Goodwin and Deputy Peters. We're talking, possibly renew, removing the plants around there, depending on, after we would communicate with, Mr. Goodwin's family, be Donna Roberts is still living in the area, and I think her son Todd's still living in the area. Clearing off the ground, um, putting down that matting that doesn't let anything else grow out of it, whatever that's called. Probably some lava rock, new perennials, cleaning the masonry, and I've got a friend in Greenfield who I think I could get to restore the bronze, get it shined back up again. And we've got a goal of doing that with your approval, and having it rededicated May fifteenth, which coincides with National Peace Officer Memorial Day. So, uh, our fall activities would be the planning stage. When springtime rolls around, we'll start moving some things around over there, and we would need to coordinate with townpeople, figure out where the original boundaries were, we don't want to expand it, we might even contract it a little bit. But we want to make it something a little more maintenance-free, that we could continue to, keep it looking good, so.
I'd say yes.
I'd say yes.
I'd say yes.
You know, I, I don't think I'm using all three minutes.
Five minutes.
That's three addresses, so, that was one. Stop me.
Mrs. Price has reached out to me also, but.
Okay. And I think she's looking for other people to come talk to the class and, and explore other opportunities. But, I want to tie this into a lot of things I see on social media, and yeah, I've had some experiences with a pretty small handful of youth, that they're just bored. I've engaged with a couple of them, and I found out if I ask them not to do things, they stop. But, these kids that I'm gonna be working with, um, I think they represent the majority of the youth that live in our community and live in our district. And I think if we can put them out there in a positive light, maybe that activity and that kind of goodwill can spread, so. I yield the rest of my twenty minutes.
Anyone else?
All right, first I got this town business. The street signs on the north end, still no street signs, which I talked to Mike about that. Landscape fabric over the main drain that we just paid I don't know how much money to have put in, and they put landscape fabric over it on the corner of Davis and Twenty-Seventh, it's restricted in the flow. I mean, I'm sure it wasn't designed to have landscape fabric on it. I know why they did it, but the grass is growing now, they should take it out. We're getting this number two stone, want to get a couple buckets of stone and put them in front of the four hundred building there where that hole is in that sidewall? It ain't that much. And get rid of those barriers, because it's ugly, man, it looks bad. It's bad enough that there are clotheslines there, but those barriers just look ridiculous. I mean, I'll volunteer, I'll come up and carry a couple buckets of stone to level that out. I know it's not your responsibility, but Mike can't refuse to do it.
It should be, it was full at one time, but I think there's a wall in there that has collapsed, and it's just gone all.
Is it just washing out?
Yeah. That, that's the main problem, because we had that problem.
Well, there you go, throw some number twos in there, and then some twenty-sevens on top of it, and it's fixed, you know, because that just looks bad.
Right.
It looks bad. Um, I'm gonna talk to Beth Conway about the flags out there, they're looking bad on Twenty-Seventh. But I'll volunteer to go up in that lift if I need to. I got the, I'm lift certified, so.
That's the Lions Club.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna talk about, about it for. I'm just going down my list here. Um, the septic tank schedule, gotta answer. I wanna thank the new water guy, and the other one, and Mike.
They both are. They're both water insurance.
A water insurance. The two new guys, Saturday I had an interview, dude answered the phone, was there in thirty minutes, had it handled. Professionals could be, couldn't ask for more. Hopefully, we've turned a corner with the water and the sewer people, and it'll all be better now. Because they just came out, fixed it, came out today, pumped my septic out. That's how it should be done, so I applaud them. Applaud Kerry.
You got better luck than I did.
Yeah, I was, well, it all evened out.
Not really.
That's one of those Kerry. Dealt with him the last month or so, couldn't ask for a better investigation on what's going on. He was on it. My biggest thing, and a lot of the people I've talked to's biggest thing, is how we are getting coverage. First, let me ask this question, because I got a county commissioner telling me one thing, and I got somebody else telling me another thing. If Kerry writes a ticket, how much of that money goes to the town?
I understand if it's a state statute ticket, most of that goes to certain funding, and when you can, any state statute, I don't know if you guys get the same, I, we get six or eight dollars of that back that comes back. I think that's a statute person, isn't it?
Correct.
And that's because we don't have a sitting judge in town, correct? If we had our own judge in town, most of that money would come back to us?
Well, I, I, that's beyond me on that. I just, I just know that when we operate a city ordinance violation or something like that, it has to go through a court of record, which Hagerstown's what has been historically.
So, they're getting our money. I'm just wondering why we can't, I mean, we need to generate some funds here, and police enforcement would be a great one. Now, I don't know how it works up here, but what I've done with the courts in the south before, doing construction, you don't have to go, I mean, you just have to be a lawyer to be a judge, if I'm correct. And you guys vote even, or however you go up, make him a judge, and then we can keep some of that money. You know what I mean? You set it up once a month, bam, we get paid. We need to generate some funds like that, because we need police coverage. And that's our biggest issue with me and other people. I know Kerry is one guy. I know he's got a lot going on. We're wondering where the Wayne County Police are. I invited the state police to be here, I guess they're not gonna come. We're just worried about coverage, because we feel like it's like a wild west here after seven o'clock at night. I mean, I'll tell you, I walk Philadelphia, I mean, I'm, I'm not, I don't sleepwalking in streets. There's nobody around. The Wayne County Police say they got us covered, but we're not seeing it. Now, we got a broke-down car. And then, when the car's not broke down, it's parked out in front of here, forgotten everybody to see that nobody's on. It's not hard to figure out when, when the police are on, when they're off. I don't know if we still, they used to have that garage down there.
It was rented.
They rented out?
It was rented.
It was rented, that's what the town, we didn't own it. We need to find somewhere to put that car, because that's just a big red flag saying, "Hey, nobody's patrolling town." Because you're not seeing the Wayne County Police, and I always say this, I don't go out at night a lot. So, they may be covering, and I'm not seeing it, but I know when I go to work in the morning, twenty-sevens, I don't know how to say it, but it's crazy. People are flying, people are flying at five o'clock, people are flying through town. And when I talked to Kerry after that last meeting, I said, "Something's gonna happen. Something catastrophic is gonna happen, because we have no police coverage." Now, what happened to me, I don't know if it did or not, but I know a lot of things that go on in this town, would be happening if somebody was looking over their shoulder for a cop. So, I hear all this money going out for the fire department, and that's great. It would be nice to know what's going to the police department. Because this is what we're worried about right now. There's people in this town, that's crazy, the mess is crazy, look at the stolen cars coming out. That's why, one thing, I think the alert system's great. We need to do it, we need that now. We don't need to table that for six months, we need that now. Because what happened to me didn't get broadcast to anybody. Nobody knew about it until I got on the community forum and said something. Finally, later that night, the sheriff department puts something out, well, we need somebody to put, I mean, if the clerk's office is closing at two o'clock, we can put that out. Let somebody assault somebody and escapes, and we're not putting that out. You know what I mean? And that dude was out there. That dude was out there. He was out there, and nobody had a clue. In this day and age, that should not happen. We have means to alert people. So, my first question is, who's covering what, where, and when, when Kerry's not? My second question is, we gotta get some kind of coverage out on Twenty-Seventh. These grain trucks are blowing through here, not even gearing down. I mean, it's ridiculous, and you probably don't see it if you don't live on Twenty-Seventh. I live right out. I gotta pull off, and what I found out was North Street. Didn't even know that existed till this weekend, and it's five hundred feet from me, because there's no street signs. Anyhow, you can't see one out there, and then you will get run over. And if they just, even if the car was parked and nobody in it, it's gonna sow some people down. And I understand you're worried about catalytic converters getting stolen or whatever. You can park it at the church, I got cameras. You know what I mean? We need to do, we need to be proactive, because right now, the alert systems, after it happened, after it happened, after, we need to be proactive. We need to get to it before it happens.
I agree with giving the cops more funding too, but also, I feel like the, the policies also need to be looked into. I'm afraid that if we get more cops coming in here, then the people who like, don't have anything else to do but call for little things, like on other people's property, or cars that are in their yard.
If somebody's in your yard, that could be burglary, so.
What are you trying to do? I mean, what I'm saying is, is like, if I have a car on my property, and there's no flat tire or something, and then you got your neighbor Nancy over there, has nothing else to do but just call the police on you, because you have a car sitting there, then you got the cops coming to you, knocking on your door, "Oh, is your, is your vehicle, does, is the license plate valid, or are your tires, you know?" No, the tires aren't flat, but license plate's valid, it can drive. And then you got, and it's just like these, like, ridiculous things that go on.
Can I, can I, can I have a deal with me right now?
Yep.
He's, he's a very busy man, we need to, we need to let him speak.
Get time on my.
He's sat here all night, and he needs to talk. He should talk first time. All it does, he should talk. The coverage, as far as nighttime when Kerry's not here, he calls into you, and you guys are supposed to cover it, correct? Is that how that works?
What's your definition of coverage?
Having a police presence, I guess. I mean, I guess calling, if you're sitting at the Centerville election or the Hagerstown election, I don't call that coverage.
Right.
I call, sit, I mean, don't, don't you have a.
Let me explain, let me explain. So, we have anywhere from three to five officers on at any given time, sometimes more than that. And we have over four hundred and fifty square miles of Wayne County that we're responsible for. And Fountain City's part of that. And we work closely with Kerry to help make sure that, that there is coverage. It may not be your definition of coverage. You're talking about dedicated patrol, and no, we cannot, uh, we cannot assign someone for dedicated patrol in Fountain City when one of their, when one of their officers, we simply don't have the, the manpower to do that. Now, we have, uh, on some occasions, been requested by the chiefs of police of different areas to provide either additional coverage or dedicated coverage, and we certainly do work with them under those circumstances. We have also even, and I'm not suggesting this by any means, but if there are certain circumstances that would dictate it, we have contracted with other towns that can't provide twenty-four-seven coverage, and we've been able to provide them with dedicated patrol. So.
Like a, like a hired deputy, I guess.
Yeah, exactly. And, and it's really, you know, we understand that, you know, uh, we are funded by taxpayers' dollars, and we want to try to provide as much security as we possibly can, but with all of our other obligations, we can't provide that dedicated patrol, and that's what we've done in the past, is, is been able to contract with different entities to provide that dedication.
Does, so, I'm pretty sure Cambridge has twenty-four-seven, their own city police, they have somebody twenty-four-seven. Same way with Centerville and Hagerstown. They have twenty-four-seven officers. I know Hagerstown does.
Not always, primarily they do, but yeah.
So, why can't, because that's my thing, why can't they help you out like they did with the stolen cars, Centerville did, and that? You know, and they go out and help you out if they don't have anything going on. Because that's what I'm saying, we don't have, they have twenty-four-seven. If something happens outside, let's say, something happens in Jacksonburg, Hagerstown could cover that real quick, you know what I mean? I just feel like, and I'll just be honest with you, because it's what I see with my eyes. I feel like Centerville gets all the coverage, forty between, Centerville and Cambridge gets all the coverage, between Richmond, I've seen them parked around Barnrow, cocking people. And I feel like they're all over there, and nobody's over here. Now, I understand Centerville's a central location, but why can't we move this around a little bit? You know, why can't we get a saturated patrol here for a weekend, or for a day? You know, why can't we get a saturated patrol here for a weekend or for a day and get somebody to slow these trucks down? You know, it's not, Kerry's too busy, obviously. We need help. I mean, we just, we need help. And I'm just, I'm asking you for it now. I feel like we get no coverage. I feel like in the morning, at six o'clock in the morning, I could hop in my car and do a hundred and twenty miles an hour down Twenty-Seven. Now, you got that guy in the black car, but how many times was he reported before he got? You know what I mean, I feel like we're being ignored up here. And a lot of people feel that way. And whether it's, and I don't want to throw Kerry under the bus, cause I know he's trying as hard as he can, he needs help, we need some help.
And the one thing Kerry can do, you know, he can actually reach out to the state if there is a big problem on Twenty-Seven, and state has in the past come up here and-
Well, let's do it, another thing.
You know.
After talking to the county commissioners, can we reach out, get some of those speed limit signs, the ones that flash your, your speed? Now, I know the county can only put them on city property, according to the county commissioner, hey, you guys gotta ask for it. So I'm asking you to try to get together and get that. If we can get it-
I've, I've, a couple of years I've researched to get grants to get those signs and stuff like that. Uh, just, just, I've never been awarded the money to get them.
It's uh, one of those, a guy from Hagerstown told me what, twenty-eight hundred dollars for one of them?
That's, that's a bare, bare bones one.
Yeah, I just got quotes for solar, uh, signs that were three thousand dollars a piece. And you can put them on state highways, uh, but you have to get special permission. And it's not an issue, but that's something that the, you know, the town would have to pursue if they should.
I mean, I think that's a good idea.
Yeah.
It's, it's mainly on, uh, they just haven't been able to get the grant money to get them.
Yeah, cause I mean realistically, in order to get full-time coverage, there's a hundred, or three hundred and, how many houses there? How many houses are there in town? Yeah, I'm looking at two.
Seventy.
Three hundred and ten?
It would cost each person every month, each household to get full-time coverage here, right about a hundred and fifty dollars a month. Each house?
A month?
A month. Hundred and fifty a month, in order to get full-time coverage.
Seven hundred?
Yeah, you're talking three quarters, eight hundred, nine hundred thousand dollars in order to get full-time coverage here.
Can you have one more, can you have one more deputy?
No, that, that's full-time coverage.
I don't understand what you mean full-time coverage, that's-
That's what you were talking about, as far as, you know, that we don't have full-time coverage, we have, you know, Kerry's full-time, Terrell is part-time, but in order for an officer to be in town all the time?
Twenty-four-seven.
Twenty-four-seven, you're talking at least eight hundred thousand dollars that the town would have to come up with, and that's almost, that's more than our budget, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Eight times, six times our budget.
Yeah, six times our budget.
How are their deputies going to cost us? I mean, Spies has got pointy deputies. I mean, I know most of those are just getting the badge and going, but they still have pointy deputies. What are we paying them, what are they making here?
Well, mostly, you're talking like, so most of those are like reserve officers, volunteer officers.
Right, so.
They don't get paid.
Appreciate you coming in, David, on that side of it, like I said, as far as on the signs, we definitely will look into it on that.
Yeah, we need to get those street signs, like, I came up here, what, six months ago and that's about it?
Yep, and I, I know Shane did put that on there, because they're the ones that took it, that took them down. And there is a couple of them that still need to be, as far as the town taking care of them, like I said, it's gonna be on our priority as far as to make sure that it is taken.
And getting that, I mean, getting that off that main drain is a pretty deal too.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I mean, that's really restricting flow down there.
Anyone else?
Can I ask you a question? Is there any progress getting the semis and big trucks off our street?
Yes and no. We cannot-
Part of the time, we can't even pull out of our own property.
The new owners of them anymore, to restrict them. Actually Friday, Wes and I was, I was at Wes's shop Friday afternoon talking to him, and a Pepsi, maybe Seven-Up truck, actually was on Twenty-Seven, and parked on the side of Twenty-Seven and unloaded it. And he said that he hasn't really noticed many getting parking lot over there anymore.
Oh, I do, every day, every, I mean, especially on Fridays, when I go to work, you got Coke and you got Pepsi, and they're side by side on that street.
So we can-
I sit on my porch and watch them, every day going and coming both directions, and one of them really went over the rocks today, and I didn't know, look and see, they're turning back.
Did we not discuss making that a no trucker out?
Yes.
I thought we were gonna have a sign.
Yes, we needed a sign.
I thought we actually-
Pretty sure we voted yes on it and the sign was supposed to get ordered.
And the attorney, you passed that by him, I remember he was saying that also.
Yep, and it was supposed to go by them on whether or not we can or we cannot, yeah.
The next time I see him there, I'm gonna stop again, because-
I'll reach out to Aubrey tomorrow and make sure that we can make that street a no truck street.
There's gonna be a catastrophe if something's not done.
Okay.
And I hope it's not the school, Wes.
About.
That's, that's true.
Really, a bad problem.
Okay.
I'm not here to bitch about stuff, I just wanted to know.
Do you have anything, ma'am?
You already yelled at your time.
I have a question. This is for Sheriff Redder and Kerry, if he's in earshot.
He's always in earshot.
I, I see a lot of stuff on social media, you know, about things going on around town, and, and I read a few posts that are kind of concerning. You know, somebody's gonna shoot through their door, through their window, and overreact to a situation. Can you school us on stand your ground laws, castle doctrine, and how they do or don't, support that philosophy?
Well, um, you know, I'm gonna be, I'm gonna have to be very vague, because every circumstance is circumstantial. And you really, uh, you really have to look at all of the details, and it's impossible for us to come up with every potential scenario that we could see, but, um, the main rule of thumb is, is, you know, if you're in your home and you feel that your life is threatened, uh, then, you know, you have the ability to protect yourself with the amount of force that is reasonable. So, you have to be careful about, you know, um, thinking that you can just arbitrarily shoot through the door or shoot through your window, uh, at, at someone who may be outside. Heaven knows, it, it could be a friend or a loved one or somebody like that coming up and knocking on your door, and then if you're in that heightened state, you could actually do something that, uh, you regret for the rest of your life.
Thank you, yes.
I, I think it's very, very important, um, to be a responsible, you know, if you are a gun owner, be responsible. And to research these laws and understand what your responsibilities are.
Maybe the people that are typing those threats are gonna watch this later on in the meeting, cause they didn't show up tonight, so. My guns are the laziest guns in the world, they stole my boat, took off across the lake, forgot to put the drain plug in, and they all sunk to the bottom, so I don't have any gun.
That's what they were, every day.
Anyone else, that's all I gotta say about that.
All right, uh, can I get a, huh? Tom?
I have a couple of questions on claims. Sorry, sorry. I'll just be real quick, um, the healthcare, I'm seeing two for Kerry. One on the seventh, one on the twenty-second, and I'm seeing four for Trina. And they all say one-third. Trina says one-third, Kerry's just says, um, August. It is instantly, I'm confused, why there's two, two August premiums for Kerry and four one-thirds for you, and only one for Kyle.
Well, there isn't only one for Kyle, mine is split into threes, so one-third's general, one-third's water, one-third's sewer.
But there's four on here.
There's probably more than four, cause I paid the insurance twice in one month.
I see there's one, two, three, four, four for you, two for Kerry, and only, I only see one for Kyle that says half.
I don't know, I have to look at it.
I mean, I know we have, I mean, I know we have to pay the insurance, I'm just wondering why there's different, it looks like there's two full month August payments for Kerry and four one-third payments for you, and only one half of month for Kyle. I mean, we can go ahead, I'm sure one to be paid, I just, I'm just curious on why there-
Can we go ahead and approve, get a motion to approve claims and payments?
I make a motion.
Second.
To approve claims and payment.
Second.
Second then.
Call in favor. Can I get a motion for adjournment?
Motion major?
Second, call in favor?
Third.
Aye.
Meetings adjourned.